I'd like to call this regular Board of Finance meeting order October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven oh one. All members are in attendance and Annette is participating via Zoom. We have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from May sixteenth of two thousand and twenty-three.
So moved second.
Any discussion? Pretty good. Annette?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I opposed unanimous. Uh, first order of business. The pet purchase of a mini excavator. I'm gonna let Patrick talk to this because he's. He's been the one that's been working on it.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's I'm sorry. I can't actually be there with you. Um, so this uh, this kind of happened uh, spur of the moment, if you will. During the picking and fiddling, Chuck Millard passed away. Uh, Chuck Miller was somewhat of a legend in the town. Um, and there is a bunch of equipment that they are going to be getting rid of. Um, one of which being one piece being this Kubota KX eight oh oh eight oh dash four. Um, it's got thirty-four hundred and fifty hours on it. Um, this unit, what makes it somewhat valuable is all the attachments. Um, it's gonna be coming with a flap bucket, an eighteen inch digging bucket, a thirty inch digging bucket, a ripper stump remover, a mower deck, a hammer tooth mower deck, and it will also be coming with rubber tracks which we need. In addition to this, Julie, if you could scroll down the pictures.
So there's first, are you able to see any of this, Patrick?
I can see the uh, the picture of the excavator now. All down to the uh, trailer.
There we go. Nice.
Okay, so this is the trailer that he has. Um, it's a twenty ton trailer. This actually was on the capital list to purchase with the vibrating steamroller. So if you recall, when we purchased the vibrating steamroller, um, that came in at twenty thousand. So we still have eighty thousand uh, left in the capital plan. Uh, what I'm looking to to do with the Board of Finance is basically make a change in the capital plan um, to purchase this Kubota and the trailer. The asking price that we have right now is seventy-two thousand for the Kubota and three thousand for the trailer. Um, that would still leave uh, five thousand in the account if we wanted to fix up the trailer or anything else. You know, in in light of uh, some of the weather events that we had, uh, I think the big thing is that uh, this is the right tool for the job. We have a lot more uh, drainage dishes to to dig. Um, we've been renting a machine that looked just like that uh, for Grassy Hill when we're installing all the pipes. Um, it's kind of the right tool for the job. Uh, so what what questions do you have for me?
Patrick, what's the cost of the rental? And I know it's hard to say because I imagine it's, is it done on a per day or per hour basis and uh?
Well, we've been renting it by the week and I want to say it's about twenty-five hundred dollars a week.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, because they, we have to have it delivered, have it have to have it picked up. We have to reserve it. This this we would have and we'd be able to move it around with this trailer. Plus, we'd be able to um, move our regular backhoe around. Uh, as you may recall, we entered into a uh, Public Works Mutual Aid Program last year. Uh, so this would actually, if we did have like, say that like the microburst that hit uh, Bethel, um, we'd be able to actually send a crew with a loader. Um, with our backhoe uh, and put it right on that trailer and and use our normal trucks. Uh, so it would give us versatility to help out our other towns as well.
So so I'm also assuming since it's on a trailer, it can, the Public Works Crew can get to work repairing things that much faster. As opposed to waiting for something and you can use it on multiple jobs since you don't have to use the rental agency to move whatever. Move the their equipment into place.
Absolutely. Plus, when uh, if one of our machines goes down, we don't have to pay for uh, transportation to and from uh, our mechanic as well. If it's a a big problems, which we've had.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I had some, I I take it um, we have people who know how to operate this thing.
Absolutely. Um, so I had uh, Mike Foreman and Paul Simansky um, actually take it out and and look it over. Uh, they're familiar with it. They were able to use the machine. Um, they were very impressed with this. Uh, and just so you know, normally the uh, that excavator would be about a hundred and forty thousand new. This is much, much more than we had talked about last year. Um, it's just a a much bigger unit. Um, one of the things that that uh, and and Ed, I know Ed Katie uh, was kind of impressed with this, that the arm moves independently of the box, which also moves, which gives you much more versatility. Um, it also has the uh, blade on the front of it, um, which gives you more stability. It's a plowing blade. Uh, you know, just from a versatility standpoint, it's a, it's a pretty good machine.
And it's the right size for us?
Absolutely.
And uh, what is the, well, two questions. One is, did you do it? Go online and look at what prices are for used equipment?
This is a very fair price. Um, we have been pricing them out uh, for a while and this is definitely a fair price for it. I think we're actually getting a deal. Um, and the value is really in uh, all the attachments that come with it. Um, that's worth more than the machine itself.
And the design life, you said thirty-six hundred and fifty hours. How many hours is this?
Thirty-four fifty.
And and you know, how, what what's the design life or the expected life of the engine and?
It it's gonna, it it's, it's gonna go at least to like ten thousand or more. It's how we take care of it. Um, you know, we we re-just redid the loader um, at the transfer station that had similar hours that had thirty-four hours, a hundred hours also.
So and again, you you guys can service that.
Absolutely. And I and I will say the machine was taken very good care of um, when they looked it over and and Chuck was known for keeping his uh, machinery very good. So uh, I'm I'm pleased and and that's why we had a chance to look it over as well, just to kind of look at the mechanics of it to make sure that it was a good deal.
Patrick, can you just explain the math in terms of? The capital approved and what's left in an account and how will?
But well, we originally had the uh, uh, the roller, the vibrating roller um, plus a uh, trailer and we hadn't priced it out yet. Um, when when that was put into the budget, it was done at the request of Russ Dorenzo during a Board of Selectmen, our finance meeting. He felt that we needed it for the dirt roads, the vibrating roller. So we had set aside a hundred thousand dollars, which uh, was more way more than enough, as a matter of fact. Um, so this is a an opportunity to use funds that we've already assigned. This won't add anything to it, um, because it comes from that capital account.
And does that require, do we need to have a s- a town meeting? We do, right?
This will go to a town meeting. Um, there is a, there is a provision, just to let you know, and we had run this by uh, Gail McTaggart, our town attorney. There are provisions uh, that allow exceptions uh, in the bid policy uh, under subsection F. Uh, we have the ability to waive uh, the bid procedure if we find that it's in the best interest of the town.
So do we have um, the authority or does the Board of Selectmen have the authority to move things around in the capital line?
Well.
To add things to the capital line that that are, or is that the purpose of going to town meeting or?
Correct. What I'm looking for is a blessing from the Board of Finance, um, but it will not be your decision. It will be the decision of the town at a town meeting. Um, tentatively proposed for seven o'clock on October twenty-fifth.
I'm happy.
I am too.
Same.
Okay, you can take it from here, Ed.
All right, well, uh, just one quick question. The, it sounds to me because of the weight of the trailer. Uh, I know all the, all the the guys down in the garage have CDLs. Um, I believe this is gonna require an A, right? For like a tractor trailer. I think it's over ten thousand pounds. I was wondering how many guys have that license?
Everybody has a C, everybody has a CDL. They all drive um, like the Big Macs and everything. So all of them would be able to utilize this.
But with, if it's over ten thousand pounds, it would need. The the A license.
I believe they all have an A, I believe.
Okay.
Can we check on that?
That's a good question.
Do you have a question, Julie?
Yeah, so does this replace the need for the vibrating roller?
No, we already purchased a brand new one. It just came in way under budget.
Oh, that's what was twenty thousand. You put a hundred thousand away.
Correct. You put a hun- yep, a hundred thousand away. Um, I'm, and we only spent twenty of it, so it's not creating new funds. Um, we'll get to that later, but this is just at reallocating funds that we've already allocated.
Sounds good.
Great.
So why did we put a hundred thousand dollars away if they only cost twenty?
Um, they were looking at a bigger one. Um, and now honestly, this will fit on this trailer, which is nice, but uh, uh, we were, what we had done is we had checked with some other towns. South Berry had a very nice vibrating roller. Um, so a couple of members of our Public Works Crew went down to use it for a while. Um, we even borrowed it for a little while, uh, and they were very, very pleased with it. So we had made that decision a few months ago to purchase that, but it was done as a brand new unit.
So the smaller one is adequate for us.
Absolutely.
Answering the next question.
Yeah.
What do you say Kubota is, I don't know if it's a Cadillac, but it's one of the top brands, is my understanding also.
It is, and it's good. It's easy to get parts. Um, they're easier to work on. Um, it's it's really a good unit.
So if we're hearing you correctly, you would like us, be before I ask for motion, you would like us to appropriate seventy-five thousand of that eighty from the steamroller line purchases.
Correct.
It comes down to.
Correct.
Before I ask for motion, does anybody have anything they'd like to discuss about this?
So if you can just add one thing to that motion, and that is you have to uh, change the current year's capital plan because this is a new project, right?
Alright, so we're making a motion to change the current year's capital plan.
To add this project, this purchase of this excavator. And then you're gonna fund it with seventy-five thousand coming from the steamroller.
No, but we're gonna, we're gonna get the motion. If you could just get it all written down before I ask for it, I'll make sure everybody's comfortable with it.
Does that take two motions? Or can we do it all in one?
Does.
So.
You can do it in two.
Separate, okay.
You built a new project and then how are you gonna fund it?
Okay.
So you want to read back to us?
Well, about change current year capital plan to add the Kubota and the trailer.
Okay, it's gonna be separate motions, obviously.
And then there's gonna be a separate motion to move to funding.
We have to make a motion for the, for the Kubota and then we have to make a separate motion for the trailer.
Just a better thing. No, no, I, no, it's ju- it's just the Kubota and the trailer. It's just the total amount with seventy-five thousand dollars, I think is what Patrick quoted.
Yes, Kim, uh, actually, the trailer was included with the capital plan for the roller. So I believe all we're looking for is the exception to add the excavator to that line.
Okay, so that's then seventy-two, right?
Correct, correct. Because the trailer was already part of it um, when we had it on that line.
So the first motion would be to amend the capital plan to include the excavator for and seventy-two thousand dollars. And then the second motion would be um, how we're gonna fi- that we're gonna fund it with the surplus from the roller.
Correct.
Yeah, that sounds, sounds good.
Do we need to add to the motion that we will then be going to a town meeting or is that just a given?
I think that goes to the Board of Selectmen. If if we approve it, it will go right, Patrick. It goes right to you guys.
Correct. We have a tentative meeting scheduled for ten AM tomorrow.
Yeah, because I think the Board of Selectmen already said yes, right? You approved it. You needed us then to say, okay, and then you can go to the um, public meeting.
It has to go back to the Board of Selectmen to call the town meeting.
Oh, yeah, exactly. Yes, thank you.
So it sounds like what we're doing is referring to the Board of Selectmen, our approval.
Yes.
Yes.
So actually, it's not eighty thousand, it's seventy-seven because three is already included.
Actually, it's seventy-two and three, making a total of seventy-five. So if you're just doing the excavator, it's seventy-two thousand.
Right, which, right.
Alright, so can you read back what Kim had said about the motion?
All right, your first motion is going to change the current year capital plan to add the Kubota for seventy-two thousand dollars. The second one is to fund it with surplus from the vibrating roller.
And what was the key word there about the capital plan to amend?
Amend the capital.
So do we have, do we have a motion to amend the capital, the current capital year with plan for the steamroller, for the excess funds from the steamroller, the fund?
That's the second motion.
Yeah, first.
So we're just making a motion to amend it?
Yes, to amend the current year's capital plan.
You wanna make it?
Sure, yes.
To add the excavator.
Yes, so I move that we amend the current year's capital plan to include the purchase of an excavator. Specifically, the Kubota.
I second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
I. Opposed? Unanimous? Would you care to make the second motion?
I'm on a roll. I move that, well, now I have to, now I'm gonna have to, so we're allocating fu- or using funds from the current year's capital plan.
From, from the steamroller.
From the vibrating roller to purchase the Kubota excavator and the associated Kubota excavator and associated um,
Attachments.
Attachments. For seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Unanimous. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you all very much.
Can we take it out for a little test drive? Yeah, no.
Got a license?
Item, item two, Patrick, we'd like to discuss the tennis courts.
Absolutely. So um, I think actually, Julie, do you have, or Kim, do you have those samples?
Do, I do.
All right. So as you know, we went out to bid um, a couple of times for the tennis courts, uh, because the base that it is right now um, is uh, an asphalt base. Um, so what we've done is uh, now we're gonna be replacing it with a uh, post tension concrete. Uh, our lowest bid came in, our winning bid came in at two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, through this bid process, I had a lot of people reach out, um, because they like that cushiony uh, eight millimeter lining that's put on uh, on the tennis court that's there now. Um, it's easier on their joints. It's easier to play with instead of just the regular concrete. Um, so that uh, uh, green thing that you see there, that that cushiony, that would be applied over the post tension concrete. Uh, what it also does from what the regular painted surface to um, this cushion is uh, it adds ten years of life. So we would uh, now extend the tennis court warranty to a twenty-year warranty. So, so what we had, what we had had uh, assigned from our budget in this capital plan uh, was two hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, that's why we went out to bid to see if we can come in lower. Prices have gone up from my original pricing that I quoted uh, a year and a half ago. Um, just because materials and every other reason why uh, prices keep going up. So in addition to the two hundred and forty-five thousand, um, that cushion coating is seventy-two thousand uh, five hundred for an eight millimeter cushion. Um, that that winning bid was uh, was a good price. I think our higher price was just under uh, three hundred and forty thousand dollars out of all of our bids. Um, this is gonna include all the new fencing, um, you know, and all the new equipment that's required to do it. So in addition to the uh, hundred, the two hundred and ten that's in the capital plan, uh, what we're asking for is another um, hundred and ten thousand, bringing it to three twenty. Um, they would start this product, project in the spring and it would be approximately sixteen weeks to completion.
And this has to go to town meeting also.
This would have to go to town meeting. Now, this is an additional, um, so this would be coming from an undesigned funds. This is an additional appropriation for the capital plan.
How many tennis courts do we have?
Just that, just the two courts that are on the corner, Shallow Beach and North Street. And I will say, they do get a lot of use.
Is there lighting there?
No.
Does this include lighting?
No.
Put it on, on, everything will be new, right?
Absolutely. So basically, everything that's there is gonna come down and it's gonna be replaced. Um, so what's happened is that on that base is uh, kind of worn away. They can't put that cushion coating over it anymore. Um, this, uh, the the company that was chosen is Classic Turf. Um, I did all the reference checks on them. Um, people were very, very pleased with the work they've done. Um, so I'm satisfied that uh, this will be a good, good company to go with.
By the way, the last time we did, went this route, they did Classic Turf did the work.
Oh.
Many, many moons ago. So they're, they've been in business for a long time.
I don't know. I mean, my gut just tells me that this seems really over the top expensive. But I haven't built a tennis court in a while.
My experience in construction lately is this is it. Like it, all materials have gone up, all labor has gone up. I mean, it's been, um, it's shocking everybody. That's my experience and I'm sure it's yours.
Calm down a bit.
I'm not surprised by the increase and it's still shocking.
Right.
Me too, Julie, me too.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I guess my question, Patrick, is what you already addressed. You said it gets a lot of use. How do we measure the benefit of it to the town? What's a method way to think about it?
You know, we, we had that conversation at the Board of Selectmen because I drive by it every day and I do see people using it. Um, I I think one of the fears of of not going with what people are asking for um, is that they're not gonna use it. If it's a concrete and it's not cushiony and they're not gonna feel comfortable, they're gonna find someplace else that is. Uh, we want to make sure that people are gonna use it. I'd like to fix up that area, you know, maybe some benches on the side, you know, make it a little nicer. Um, I I know that uh, Booth Free School on Mondays after school, they've been having uh, tennis classes. So all the kids get out there. I mean, it's, it's actually beautiful and magical looking when they're all out there. Uh, it's very exciting. So it does, it does get use.
Do we have any leagues or anything like that in town or organizations that use it? Or it's just individuals?
It's all individuals at this point.
But we, it's, this sounds like Patrick anecdotal as opposed to actual data that we really don't know how many people in town are actually using it.
Correct, correct. I I did not do a survey of how many do, no.
Okay.
I just live by there and and see it being used.
I don't, I don't, I don't see it being used very, very much, but you know, it's, it, it all depends on when you drive by there, I suppose. I, 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 I um, I had said to Patrick that I thought we should charge fees to use it, but um, I'm not sure, I'm not sure we're able to do that. I I guess I want to just say that we spent I don't know how many years deciding whether or not we should spend a couple hundred thousand dollars to to put bathrooms in the park. And um, I would like, I would hope that if we spent three hundred thousand on the tennis courts, the next time that we start to look at improvements um, for services that are more widely used, that um, we're just fair about our allocation of money. Because getting those bathrooms put into the park was like pulling teeth.
Well, at at this point, I mean, we had, we had actually, I had actually uh, uh, kind of toyed with the idea of closing the tennis courts this year because I felt that they were unsafe because the rips are starting to open and I was afraid it was truly a trip hazard. Um, so I ta- talked to uh, some locals that I know use it regularly. Um, they said they'd be careful and they'd still, still be using it. Um, but I wonder how many people aren't using it right now because of the condition of it.
A, a different question, and I, I believe we talked about this in the past, but it was put aside in that with the huge popularity of pickleball, say we, uh, say, I wouldn't want to live near it, I mean, listen to that. But say we say, okay, yes, let's go and spend this three hundred and twenty thousand, so a hundred and ten additional from what we budgeted. And I just have this feeling that, and again, not based on anything, but just a feeling that people say, well, if you're going to spend that much money, why aren't you putting in pickleball courts? Because so many more people play pickleball than tennis these days.
Oh, I hope that's not true.
Can it be a second, uh, can, like, can tennis courts second as a pickleball? I don't play either.
You have, you have striped, but yeah.
Okay, is that a possibility?
That's, that came up. Um, actually, when I had originally proposed this in the budget itself, um, we had toyed with that idea and then we had a bit of an uprising. There's been articles in um, the New York Times, the Washington Post uh, about the noise. So I actually went down to South Berry with my dog after work. We sat by the pickleball court in South Berry. Um, it it's pretty loud and it's this because it's a wooden, on like a harder ball and like a wooden paddle. Um, I can see what they're talking about with the noise because it's not the same pitch as tennis at all. Um, we had kind of talked about it. If we were going to do a pickleball, it wouldn't be there. Uh, because there's too many houses that are just, there's, they're too close to that and you would, you would hear it. We wouldn't want to affect their quality of life. Um, but pitch, pickleball is kind of controversial from a noise standpoint.
Thought they were coming up with a lower uh, noise ball. I don't know anything about it, but.
Someone will. But my question would be like, what else, what else would we do with that space? You don't want to let it continue to deteriorate and and or be dangerous and just shut it down and be useless. So is it better to just invest in something now and then potentially look at leads? Can it be rented to leads? Is there some other, you know, to make sure that the benefit is that the money's being used well?
We could absolutely do that. I would feel confident if it was a a newer court. Um, obviously, because I, you know, right now it is a hazard. Uh, but yeah, we could look into that. It's not a problem at all. I mean, when the, when Booth came to us and said that we wanted to run an after-school program, I just thought it was the greatest thing ever. And then to see all the kids lined up with all their tennis balls, it was great. Um, but I, I, and the thing is with our town, we don't have a lot of uh, functions uh, or a lot of things that you can do. So the things that we have, I think, will become a little bit more valuable. You know, we don't have a town pool. We don't have a rec center. Um, the things that we do, I want to take care of it, you know, just like uh, the the basketball court uh, at the park. You know, now that I walk my dog every day, I get to see people playing on the basketball court. I had no idea that there, that many people were using it. Um, that also has a cushion coating and when we go to replace that, I would want to do the same thing. I think it's easier. Um, if a child can keep from getting, you know, a scraped up knee on the concrete from a cushion, then, you know, I think it's worth it.
Patrick, um, the Washington Club uh, is gonna have need for tennis courts. They're getting, they're getting kicked out of uh, gun school.
Okay.
Here or so. Um, I know they've been struggling about where to put it. And I don't know if there, this could be anything that could be rented to them for some periods of time or not. I I just have no idea, but just something to maybe look into.
Okay.
I also think that this could be a naming opportunity. I know, I've mentioned that to you. But seriously, I mean, somebody that, you know, is feeling um, philanthropic and wants to give back to our beautiful town. I'd be very happy to drive by and see Bruce Hames' name there.
I'm sure Bruce would be happy to see your name on it, Paul.
There you go.
But I, you know what? I'm not kidding. Seriously, I think it's, it's something worth considering and there can be some reach out to someone, folks in the community. Why not?
Yeah, camps are a big thing too. I know my son did tennis camp when he was young. I don't know. I think that was at Chappag, but that would be another thing. And what would the schedule be? Uh, for, if this were approved, what would the schedule be to do this work?
Oh, it's spring.
Yeah. Sixteen weeks.
And how many weeks did you say?
And by the way, uh, Paul, uh, it was gonna take sixteen weeks to, from start to to finish.
So it'll be basically closed all next summer.
No.
Half a summer.
No, it'll be, it'll be, i- i- I, I, if they're, what we're talking about is starting in like March or April, so it would be open in the summer. Now, and I, and I, and I would caution you, uh, Paul, um, I'm gonna be asking for money when it comes to the ambulance. So don't use up all our funds yet. That's what we're gonna ask for, because I think that, I think that's a perfect ask uh, for, for, once we get the plans together. I think that's gonna be a, a townwide effort to get that done.
Mm-hmm. Patrick, did you mention uh, the life expectancy of the finish?
Uh, twenty years. Cushion coating, it's a ten year. So either way, at two hundred and forty-five, we're already well over what our capital was to spend. Um, this is just gonna bring it a little bit more to get a better quality finish on it.
So ten years, ten years to redo the surface and twenty years for the whole court?
No, it'll be twenty years on the, on the whole thing with the cushion coating because it protects it.
10 years without the coating.
Oh, without, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Correct. And that was kind of a, that was kind of the thing. Once I also realized that it's just going to extend the life that much longer, it kind of seems like a win.
In light of how much road repair we've had of late, given our ridiculous crazy storms, et cetera. I know, I understand right now that we're in a comfortable place. But my concern is we still have a lot of rain and snow to come this year, I'm sure. And are we going to be questioned? Are we going to be bumping against available funds? If we need to allocate on an emergency basis, road repair, et cetera.
I, I have those conversations with Kim Barron all the time. As a matter of fact, we're more and more processed every week. Kim, do you want to speak to that as treasure?
Yeah. So I had given Patrick, I think we're up to 3100 tons of process, just process that we've purchased for these last three weather events.
We're at 3276 with the new numbers you sent to me, Kim.
Yeah. And it's about 45, that's $45,000. So we budget about 40 for the dirt roads. We bumped that up. So, so we'll be a little bit over. But, and then the rest of it, I think all the pipe and everything came to about what 69,000?
68,000 and that has a budget of 80.
Right, right. So, so you're looking at big numbers just for munchies.
And as Holly's saying, we're only at the beginning of the year.
Right, right, right. We usually, we usually use our process in the spring. That's where it gets used the most after the winter. After, after all the, you know, roads have been dusting by whatever, whatever the weather is.
Without seven inches of rain.
We're held hostage by the weather every year. And so we're not really sure. We had a really
No, it's unusual.
Mild, unusually mild winter last year. So we didn't use a lot of our winter materials. So.
I'm also thinking more too on a longer term basis because I, my road I use as an example that it, it was almost like an omen. The Public Works crew would come and fix the road and boom, 24 hours later, there'd be gullies again, you know, such that there
That's every road in town.
Well, exactly. You take mine multiplied by so many other roads.
I mean, these three events have been kind of unusual. You know, we've had, we've had these weather events every decade or so, and this was our time. And now in the past where we used to get some FEMA money, emergency money available to us to recoup a lot of that. It's not coming for these type of storms because government is really tapped out. So, so these smaller events where we in the past would maybe be able to get some grant money from FEMA for it on an emergency basis, it's going to be harder and harder to see. You're not going to see that money as forthcoming as we did in the past.
No, I think that's a big concern because we don't know what the, the new normal is, will be. And then I also think as if we continue to have these events, which I fear we will, do we have to start addressing the roads in a different manner to do more permanent solutions?
So Holly, are you thinking that those questions affect our decision on the tennis courts?
Yes, potentially. And also I think that the, the public perception of it, that we're spending over $300,000 on tennis courts that benefit a very, what we don't know percentage of people in town versus doing something more long-term to fix the roads. Are we, is that a sensible spend?
Let me ask Patrick, when do you have to commit to this?
I would like to have a go to town meeting. As it stands right now, we do not have funds to do the tennis court because we're only at 210. So we don't even have the amount to do it as just concrete at this moment. The moral, the story with, with Kim is, you know, with our town aid road and some of the other funds that we're using, we're still not in a critical phase when it comes to our roads itself. And how I would, how we're addressing the roads going forward is we're adding a lot more drainage, kind of like the project on Grassy Hill. You know, excavator is going to come in handy with that. We've had to clear out, like hiring a vacuum truck to clear out those basins because they get clogged. And that's where you have a lot of damage. Because now if a, if a basin isn't working correctly, you know, the water overflows and then you'll see that wash out, you know, similar to like, we've seen it on Dorothy D'Abol Lane down at the bottom where, you know, the, the culvert's just full. So, you know, we've been trying to do a little bit on the, on the maintenance side, but also adding new drainage to improve the infrastructure. And, you know, once we get back on Grassy Hill, I know you're going to see the results of it where these roads just wash out and we're going to try and contain that. So there is a plan to address those.
I'm wondering whether. Yeah. I'm wondering whether we're saying that we're not ready to approve this at this point. I mean, I'm just sort of, that's the sense I'm getting from the conversation.
You know, I do, I do want to add a couple of things. You know, Patrick spoke about town aid roads. So we received, we finally received all of our money for Davenport. And the state actually gave us more money because the contractual amount of the grant changed on their end. So they had to redo it. That's why we waited all these months apparently without knowing it. So, so, so we have some extra funding in our, our, our bridge and culvert stuff. And we also have ARPA funding that is earmarked for a lot of these culverts that have failed in the past and are in dire need of repair. And, and Patrick is undertaking these. What is it? Shalhoub's Road is almost done. We've got, we've got, we've got a bunch of them in the ARPA funding that are going to that's going to help overall the flow of all of these. It's going to help the water flow much better.
Kim, I, I was going to actually touch on that during my selectman report. I'm also going to mention something else. So you, the Board of Finance feels a little bit more comfortable. You all know that the underground storage tanks have to be removed. We did get a winning bid on the removal of the tanks and the installation of a concrete convault fuel system. The winning bid came in at 199019. I just want to say that two weeks ago, I received from the state of Connecticut, a steep grant for that project for 250,000 with a $50,000 town match. So that is just going to be credited back as funds that we don't have to use for that. I was hoping to get a steep grant on the tennis courts. Unfortunately, the town did not receive it.
Patrick, so my question is, when do you have to commit to Classic Turf to sign a contract to build it?
I cannot commit until we have the funds to do.
No, you can't commit until. My question is, when is the last date that you have to, have to sign a contract to have this done last, next spring? I'll tell you why I'm asking because we, we don't know what's going to happen in the winter. And if you could put just the signing of the contract off, we can approve everything subject to blah, blah, blah. And then, and then actually contracted in the spring. That's my question.
I, I want to say it's within 60 days. I have their contract in front of me. So I'm looking at when it is. And I don't see a specification for how long it would be after the bid to take, to sign the contract. I would say, I would say in order to be at the beginning of spring, we would have to do something by November.
Okay. Well, then that doesn't do us much good if it's by November.
Because they're booking up for spring already.
That was my question. When?
Very fair question.
Yep.
Going back to the efficacy and of doing this, I mean, this is a quality of life issue. I think that having these wonderful tennis courts goes to the value of our properties and living here. I mean, I drive by, I see people playing, you know, doubles all the time. I think it's, it's, it's something that, you know, should be a top priority for our community. I mean, yes, we don't have a public pool, but we have wonderful rivers. You know, we have other options. We have wonderful lakes. We have warm up. We have all that. I think the tennis court is something that should be viewed as necessary for this town to offer its residents. I don't like the price, but you know, things have changed.
Kim, could, thank you. Kim, could you speak to how much money has been allocated for those tanks? That we're not going to have to use?
I think it's 200,000. Is it 200,000 capital plan?
200 that we've designated that we're not going to use.
Right.
And Patrick, that's what it sounds like. You want to use money from that.
Correct.
So it's like a $50,000 match. It's, it's 200,000 coming from the state and a $50,000 match, correct?
Correct. So the, so the, and, and the extra funds for that would just go towards a fleet management system, a computerized. So all the vehicles and the drivers would be programmed into it. So, you know, with the underground storage tanks, we're going to essentially put another 150,000 easily back into the capital plan. What I'm asking for is that taking some of those funds, the 110 additional to, to complete the project that we had laid out in the budget already.
So it will not be, it will not be an additional burden for the taxpayers?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
I think that, I think it was Holly who said, I, I, I think there's a, there's a reality issue and there's a perception issue. And I'm speaking for myself, I'm just not sure this is the time to spend 300,000 on tennis courts. But that's my position. So.
Kim, how much is in the tar account, town aid road?
Oh, I get it.
Roughly?
1.3. And some of that is committed to minor bridge, Weller's Bridge.
So what do you say north of a million? That's not committed?
Definitely. I think it's 1.3.
And that money can be used, I'm asking a question, can be used for maintaining these issues with the roads that we're having?
Absolutely. That's what it's all about.
And that's all in the current budget or reserves.
Right.
Yeah, that's all, that's all state money that we get every year, which is roughly.
Right. And that includes the money that came back to us for, for Davenport.
So that goes to the point. We have a disaster weather wise and have all kinds of extra expenses. You're saying we have a million too.
Right.
That we can spend to do, to fix that stuff without having to go back to the taxpayers.
Correct. And also on the perception issue, I, I think I disagree. I mean, Patrick's been doing a lot of work on our roads, a lot, and a lot of effort and with minimal burden actually to the tax budget. As far as I, you know, my short time here that I've seen. So I, I don't think that perception issue is fair. I think that there's been a lot of effort put into the town roads and that there's always more. But I'm, I think exercise is hugely important and that if it helps promote that and the community, I think it's a, it's a good spend. That's my.
You might end up there as well. I mean, think of all the money Patrick has saved on the tax roads. So if we're investing that in a town amenity, and then what do we do if we don't do it? Let it rot?
Yeah, we can't do that.
And doing it, the two thirds project doesn't make any sense if you can double the length of 75,000.
Well, I, I wouldn't think that letting it rot would be a good idea, but I'm just thinking that is now the time to make that, to do that spend.
Well, it sounds to me you've got to make it fairly soon because.
Well, okay, if we need. So, so say it's 16 weeks. Optimistically, we start on April 1, once all the snow, et cetera, has melted. And we don't have other weather events. That means they're going to be out of commission until August.
Right.
It sounds like if we don't do it, Patrick is on the fence about shutting it down.
Sure. Yeah. No, which is sensible if, if in fact there's, if it's dangerous.
Also, I think something that we need to keep in mind is the, the work on Minor Bridge. We, there's 700,000 that's in this year's budget for that. Half of, half of the 1-4 for the whole project that's going away next year. And there's also the roughly 550 this year and 550 next year that we're putting in for, for Weller's Bridge that we will, it'll go away after next year and then we're going to get reimbursed at 1.1. I think the town's pretty healthy.
Yeah.
Patrick, let me one more thought about the timing issue. I appreciate that you'd have to sign a contract to commit to, if you want to start in April. But what would they charge for a cancellation fee? In other words, suppose, I mean, you know, the S hits the fan. I mean, I'm, I'm not, this is worst case, not expecting. But all of a sudden, you know, you ran out of money for some reason. Could you get a $25,000 cancellation fee, just to make up a number?
There's nothing in, in their contract specifying that. I would have to incorporate.
My guess is, my guess is they're busy and the effect would ultimately be just to move somebody else up and get their, their done quicker. So not, not that we'd expect to use it. I don't expect to use it at all. But just to have that contingency if you ever got into that. And I'm trying to, and the reason I'm suggesting it is because sensing some of the reservations we have now on the, on the committee, on the board, that this might be a way to help ameliorate those concerns.
I, I think Kim kind of said it best with, you know, and, and bringing up the town aid road. We have hundreds of thousands of dollars in reserve for if natural disaster continues.
Right. And I, I think what we're saying is there could also be million dollar disasters and that we would be more comfortable getting at least to the winter. And so I like Bruce's idea of putting in a cancellation clause and even if it costs us some money. And with the assumption that we're not going to have to use it.
That might make them a little shy, just saying.
I, I, I wouldn't be able to speak on behalf of our winning bid.
Well, but if I'm the winning bidder, I'm going to take a little bit, I, I would, I would not make Roxbury a priority with that. Just saying, as a business person.
Well, it depends on their, it depends on their status. I'm looking at, at roofers and, you know, they're busy for the next year. So, you know, or two, yeah. So actually having somebody moved up is really very little cost to them.
Right.
Here's what my proposal would be, I suggest, that we suggest to Patrick that he try to negotiate that with, with a cancellation clause. But that we approve it, whether or not he can do it or not, but that he tried to use his best efforts to get it. Because I agree that it'd be useful. I'm just trying to, to deal with the concerns that I've heard around the table. And, you know, the, the worst case scenario.
Can I, can I just add something to this if you don't mind? We always kind of do everything in good faith here with our vendors. You know, they, they don't ask us for anything upfront because we're municipality. They know we have a process we have to go through. And, and, and I'm not, I've, I've never heard of us having to have any kind of cancellation. I understand why you're proposing it in this particular situation. But I, I, I'm just not too sure that, that it's needed. But.
I think the cancellation clause in a contract like this, I mean, I'm surprised there isn't one. I, I, I think they're not unusual at all.
Yeah, we're in good faith. We're not, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, no.
And if they say absolutely not, well, I suggest that, okay, we go forward, but at least we try it. And I think, you know, if they're busy, they might say, hey, you know, that's a way to pick up another 25 grand or 10 grand or whatever we can negotiate. We know they're in good faith. We know they're not just.
Right. And I, right. And I, but I just have, we've never had anything like this in any contract.
My concern is that we would not be a priority.
No, no, but they've got to, they've got to give us the I agree. If we don't get that, it's no good. But that we have to have the commitment to the April one start.
But if
They want to back out and say, well, we can't give you a start, then then I agree totally.
Well, I I we would have to come up with a contract, Bruce. We'd have to go back. So at minimum, we're going to push us, push us out at least another month. Because I would
Doesn't 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 commit to an April one start. They could push us back.
That's true too, Bill.
When we sign the contract, they would give us that window.
They will give a commitment date, start date?
Yeah.
It'll it'll get written into the contract?
We'll have a clause on it, just like every bridge, like everything else we do. There's going to be a start date and a completion date.
But is that in the contract now or do you have to go back for a month?
That that would be in the contract. What I have not signed it because we do not have the funds to do so at the moment.
Okay, so it's not in the contract that you have now, Patrick?
It it will be part of, it will be part of, it will be part of the contract. It's not even a negotiable item that has to be in there.
So it's going to be dependent on the ground frost. But so what is the next step here? Is it just to approve the the moving of funds similar to the last motion? Is that
Correct, correct. I just wanted you guys to understand that with the other Steve Grant that, you know, this isn't, again, this isn't going to be another burden on the town. Um, and, you know, our reserve for roads that are concerned, even if there is a big disaster. Um, knowing the the crew that we have on Public Works, you know, there's no doubt in my mind that there's going to be any financial burden on the town that we can't deal with.
Well, I think that's got to be made really clear. And I think that um, in terms of our messaging, um, we need to highlight that. And we need to highlight um, Patrick, all the money you have saved this town. Seriously. I I I've talked to you about this several times. I don't, I have not seen you out with your horns and flags at the market. I mean, we need to let people know what you've done to manage.
Well, you know, there's, there's a lot of things and it, believe me, Paul, every time I, you know, I I don't like spending a lot of money. I I didn't grow up spending a lot of money. So, you know, I look at every opportunity and I look at what we can do. And I look at what we can do ourselves. And and you're right. I mean, we're probably over a million dollars, you know, a year that we're saving just by taking these jobs on ourselves.
Right.
You know, that's when it comes to something I can't do or I don't feel we can do. Um, we we have to go out like the underground storage tanks, you know, the tennis courts are just things. So, you know, yes, the the the, I don't like the price either. You know, we were, we were at two hundred and ten thousand and I thought that was more than enough when we had priced it out a while ago. Um, now we don't have enough money to do the job. And if we're going to do it, I want to make sure that we're going to do it right.
Well, I I don't think anybody here disagrees with that. And to Ed's point earlier, you know, there are certain expenditures that are going to go away.
Mm hmm.
That's another huge point to make. And and I think our our taxpayers need to hear that. I mean, I think this is a really easy argument to make. And I really believe that our Roxberians uh want to have that tennis court, want to see students using it. Um, I used to use it a lot until my knees went away. But, you know, you've got to have it.
Let me still, we have that one point one coming back.
Well, right, exactly.
Weller's Bridge, so.
A lot of money coming back.
What does everybody, I don't want to ask for a vote on this money contingent upon a cancellation clause. What does everybody feel about? We vote on whether or not there should be a cancellation clause if we approve this. And that'll, that way everybody has a say. And then and then we'll call for a vote on amending the capital plan, but just like we did for the excavator.
Right, additional
What does what does everybody think about that?
I I don't, since we don't know whether we can get a cancellation clause, I don't see.
Well, contingent.
Contingent, yes, but no, no. If they don't, in other words, I'm I'm prepared to go forward with the proposal as made. Uh, and I don't want to put a requirement that we get a cancellation clause because if they say no, then we don't have any. But what I, all I want to do is to sort of say, it's a sense of the Board of Finance that we'd like the first selectmen to see if he can negotiate it if if possible.
Or have some discussion. Maybe the discussion is if you cancel, give us thirty days notice and we'll bump us up and it's at no cost. That could be
But if Patrick is of the belief that we're going to lose our 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 window to have it done, look, he's doing this. We're just, he's the executive here person. So we have to ultimately rely on him, but
So um, I don't want to hold this up. So I'm just going to abstain and I think you should move forward. I don't know if anybody else is in a similar position, but I don't want to be the person to hold this up.
All right. So is everybody comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
With with voting on amending that that capital plan without the cancellation clause in there?
Yes.
Bruce? Right. And then that you said you're going to abstain from that or from voting on the money? From moving the money?
What's this motion?
There's no motion on the floor. I'm I'm just curious as to what you're, you you want to abstain from?
Appropriating the money.
Bring the money, okay. All right. So we're going to have to do two motions again?
No, the this project's already approved. You're gonna have you just adding, you're asking for an additional appropriation from as it says on the agenda, undesigned, unassigned fund balance of, what was it? A hundred and
Hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten thousand? To add to the tennis courts.
So we don't, we don't have to make a motion like we did for the
No, you're not, because it's already an approved project on the capital plan.
All and and the, gotcha, okay.
Yeah, you just, you're going to increase that project by a hundred and ten thousand dollars with the additional appropriation.
So it's just a additional appropriation request repair tennis courts in the sum of a hundred and ten thousand. Is that basically it?
Yeah.
Would somebody like to make that motion?
So moved.
Give me a second. Do you want to make it? Want to make it or you want to go with what I said?
We'll go with what you said.
So the motion is additional appropriation request repair tennis courts in the sum of a hundred and ten thousand. So that's, that's the motion. So we have a, we have a first, we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion. The next one abstain. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
We have one opposed. Uh, abstain?
Yeah, abstain.
And so we, it's, so it's a four one one. So majority. It's approved. Motion carries. All right. Good enough. Okay, first selectmen's report.
Well, first, uh, as first selectman, I just want to say, uh, thank you. I do appreciate this dialogue and I, uh, and I I will uh, talk with the classic turf. So I thank you very much. And I think we're doing the right thing for our people. I just want to, I appreciate you guys. Um, most of what we're doing now is storm damage. So our storms, um, were July sixteenth, three inches of rain. September thirteenth, over three inches of rain in an hour. Both those were flash flood events. Uh, September twenty nine, uh, over five inches in twenty two hours. Um, yeah, we went, already went over some of the numbers. Um, I'm actually working with Army Corps of Engineers and NRCS, which is the National Resources Conservation Service. Um, doing some feasibility studies for Fenbrook or Roxbury Brook, depending what you call it, uh, on where it is. Um, of just the destruction and damage that that river has caused. So I will keep you posted as to where that goes. Um, NCRS, by the way, it's part of the Department of Agriculture, um, very, very good group. We've taken three large walks uh, of the entire stream bed all the way up to the top. Uh, we we met on September twenty fifth, the twenty eighth and October sixth. Um, from civil, uh, as civil engineers, hydrologists, conservationists, everybody's involved. It's these massive walks. Um, and very, very impressed with them so far. So again, I'll keep you posted.
Excuse me, one second. It, what Brook are you referring to? Where is, is that the one that
This is a, this is right behind Church Street, the Congress.
I I thought so. I just wanted to
Yes, with, uh, that's officially Roxbury Brook. Um, some people know it as Fenbrook, uh, because it turns into Fenbrook a a little farther down. Uh, but these rain events have really turned their lives upside down. Um, with water just flooding into their basements and through their houses and destroying their yards. Um, so we're trying to do this as something through the government, um, so we can get this compensated as well. Uh, but like I said, I'll keep you posted. Um, Minor Bridge, um, TD and Sons are working on that. Um, they've had the same setbacks, uh, if not even more, uh, because all the little rainstorms are are tough to work. That's a gigantic hole. Um, um, they've actually removed over six thousand yards of material in order to put that culvert in and the culverts all in, they're waterproofing it. And, uh, they should be putting in the other side, uh, wing walls, uh, this week. And then literally we're putting it back together. And I'm pleased to say not only are they planning to finish on time, they're planning to finish on budget as well. Um, kudos to TD and Son. They've done an amazing job. If you guys haven't gone down there, just even take a peek in there. Uh, it's much more impressive than my pictures on the weekly newsletter can show. Um, and I'm very, very pleased with the, just the positive attitude. No matter what happens, they just jump right in and, uh, they've done a great job. Um, likely also, uh, the same way as Shalabees, uh, Mark Murray has been rebuilding that. Um, and it's looking fantastic. Uh, we had that storm on the twenty ninth and he had already done the lower section, but hadn't done the upper section. Um, it it's going to hold together great and we're going to restore that Roxbury granite. So take a look when you have a chance. Um, and then the other big project that we have going on is, um, Bacon Road and Grassy Hill. Uh, we had to suspend that, uh, in late September because we had to make all our dirt roads safe. Uh, we're still doing that, but we will get that project done, uh, before the end of the year. Um, on the Public Works Garage, uh, I'm getting prices on putting garage doors in and framing them off. Uh, the next step of the Public Works Garage. Other than that, that's, we're working on a lot. There's a lot going on and, uh, uh, that's about all I'm working on right now.
Thank you, Patrick. Anybody have any questions?
Patrick, do we have any lightning damage?
No. No. Oh, you did. I'm sorry. That's happened to me before at my house. My house got hit by lightning. Was it your house?
Yeah, no, I just wondered whether it affected the town generally.
No, no, it's a power outage, but we haven't had any, uh, you know, damage or structural damage, uh, due to lightning.
Patrick, on on the Roxbury slash Fenbrook, um, and all the people that you've gotten in to look at it, um, et cetera. Who's ultimately responsible financially for coming up with a solution to, I mean, because there is serious, serious damage back there. And, um, I mean, are are we as the town on the hook for that?
Well, so where this kind of lands and and, uh, we're sharing a lot of documents. There's a lot of water that comes off three seventeen, goes over three seventeen. Um, drainage that has been added to that Brook. So I feel I already brought in, uh, the state, uh, state DOT as part of this. Um, so I'm working on it on several, several different fronts. I mean, first was to do the, the Army Corps of Engineer applications. Uh, we've done two of those already and but that's going to be a two or three year process. Uh, the good thing with National Resources is, uh, they're, they've moved it to an emergency and they want to do most of it by grant funding. Um, but again, it all starts with a feasibility study, uh, to see what they can do. And this is basically naturally, uh, in, you know, putting the embankments back, um, opening up the stream, uh, because what's happened is, uh, so much dirt has run off them out and um, that through that area, we've lost the capacity, uh, by over fifty percent. So now every flood is overflowing because the stream bed can no longer take the volume of water on a regular basis.
Well, that's, it's awful. No, on an ongoing basis, obviously something has to be done. But again, my my question is, who ultimately pays for that? I mean, yeah, there are a lot, okay. Applying for grants, we get turned down, like some of the FEMA things of late. Um, I mean,
The thing is, they they do the grants for that part of it.
They file them.
But again, we're too preliminary. I just want you guys to know that I'm working on that, uh, but I have no reason to ask for any more money for that at all.
Right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. And anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
May I just say one thing?
Sure.
I live on Church Street and one of the devastated people affected by these rainstorms. And if it wasn't for the state and town roads putting water into this tiny little tributary, this damage wouldn't be nearly as extensive to the homeowners on Church Street. Everything's funneled into that tributary. We're, we're just devastated this town. And I've done repairs in my yard for the bigger events every ten years or so where we get that big storm. And it's very expensive to do that, but we do need solutions. We're all just kind of waiting, we bated breath to see what the outcome is.
Yeah, it's all going to be federal money that in state, whatever comes through the state, it's all, it's not going to be a town fund.
We don't.
Can't, we can't, it don't own it, but it's a water course and that comes under the state statutes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Spend a million dollars on it.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you. And, uh, thank you, Pam. I didn't realize you were over there in the corner.
All right, next on the agenda. Special with the library, would you like to come up?
Wait, just head on her. Once I, once I have the group's attention, we'll talk about the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
We have, uh, first of all, thank you for spending some time with us. You know, usually we see you in February and it's budget time and it's crunch. So I thought let's, I know this is a good time. My CPA is on vacation for two weeks, so it must be a good time for the Board of Finance to spend a few minutes with us uh, and learn about the past. I've been on the board since nineteen ninety nine. So I missed only those first five years. The rest of them, as you saw in my notes, I've been around. So that part of it, how long we spend on that depends on you. I really gave you the information. If you want to call anything up, that's fine. If you don't, fine.
You know, thank you. I thought it was very helpful. Very good.
Great, great. Appreciate that. And then Pam is going to speak, Pam Southworth is going to speak a few minutes on the current finances, including the endowment. Kathleen Keefe is going to talk about fundraising. And then Teresa, our executive director, is going to review what we understand going forward about the procedure for capital projects, uh, bids and approvals, because we want to make sure we get that right. We also have one board member as audience member.
Just did something first. Okay.
Turner is our newest board member and everybody.
So we met, yeah. And Lynn Humper.
Can I ask a question for you?
Absolutely.
Who owns the library?
You do.
Who's you?
The town of Roxbury.
Well, the reason I ask is the land it looked like was um, given to the trustees is is some of the material you provided.
At that town meeting.
As far as I understand, because I'm not an attorney, what I get told by the town attorney per the meeting of September nine ninety two and September seventeen ninety two, is that the group that raised the funds and accepted the donation of the land then went to the town and said, would you like to receive this gift of the land and the building? And to have the library, the minor memorial library become the town principal library. And then there was a town vote to that effect.
Yeah, I, it was confusing because it said that, um, that the, it looked to me like the property was actually conveyed to the, to the Board of Trustees. But then it says it was adopted as a principal public library. That and that's what confused me, that that sort of um, but you said, there's a deed of the, there's a deed of the properties in the, in the name of the town.
You know, I don't know that for a fact. And maybe that should be investigated. It might not be. You know, maybe that was a process that wasn't followed through. What I was, what I understood was just what you read, that it was a joint
Clearly for the benefit of the town. We understand that. I'm just sort of legally, who actually owns it?
Let us look into that.
Yeah, okay, that would be helpful.
Great, thank you.
If there's any problem, we'll get it straightened out. Are there any other, uh, points for clarification? Are there any other points for clarification of the background material?
It sounded to me like the land had been given to the library trustees, but it doesn't say anything. It's silent on the building, that was my reading of it, at least.
Well, the building, the building was built on approval by the town, per the budget, that's that first attachment.
Yeah. And I don't think anybody's questioning that, I think we just want to sort of clarify who owns what.
Yeah, unless there's a lease of the land to the town.
Yeah, well, let us investigate that.
I mean, it's attached to the land, so.
As I say, I, we relied on the town attorney for the wording, so.
Probably doesn't make any difference, ninety-nine percent of the cases.
I guess we consider a town, probably, like town hall.
We do, we carry it on the assets of the town. And we insure it, therefore, we didn't own it.
Oh.
We couldn't insure it.
Insurers would, I would think, would look at that.
Okay, so you think due diligence is already?
Have it confirmed.
Been done many moons ago, yes.
Okay.
When the first asset inventory was done.
Okay, good.
A long time ago.
So then, we should clarify that, because that's contradictory to what the documents say. My reading of it, is the documents say that the land.
You just go right in there to the town records and let's see who owns the deed.
I ha- I have heard this story that we own the building, but we don't own the land, that the Board of Trustees owns the land. I'm just seeing that from others, I haven't seen.
That should be cleared up.
Yeah.
Well, let's, let's agree to investigate it, and if that's the case, let's get it fixed.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else on these, Manette, thank you for pointing out that we had document for the Kim's two thousand and five document, and you're right, the the missing page with items five and six was important, because
Important, yeah, yeah, it was probably a scan, a technology glitch or something.
So it's all, it's all.
Don't worry.
All right, if that's, if that's all, which is perfect, why don't we just ask Pam Southworth to say a few words, as I said, about current finances and endowment? You want to come up? Take a seat?
Evening, everyone, it's late to say that. On behalf of the library, I'd like to thank the Board of Finance for their continued support of the library. Very much appreciate. We very much appreciate the support that you've given us over the years. Every January, we provide you with a tedious amount of information to be as transparent as we possibly can about what the library needs, what their expenses are, and what the income is. And I won't, I won't go through those details tonight, but one thing I did calculate today to try to frame maybe tonight's discussion is we've always operated in a fiscally prudent way, we've, we've been as careful with our spending as possible, and very appreciative of all our sources of income, whether it be our annual fund drive with, which Kathleen's gonna talk about, the monies from the town, the appropriation, our, our friends of the library, the grants that Teresa gets, all add a lot of value to our library. But our, our operating budget asked every year, I calculated over the last seven years, has averaged a one point nine percent increase, which I think is very, very low. We do our best to cover what we can ourselves and ask you with a minimal amount. So I think that's probably the message for, for tonight, in terms of our operating budget. Our capital budget, which we also supply in January, well, we have a thirty-year-old building and a almost ninety-year-old building. And we do escrow, and we have escrowed for years to try to anticipate what our longer-term costs are going to be. And again, we're grateful for the gracious support of this board in that aspect of our, our bricks and mortar. The endowment is intended to be a funding source in perpetuity. So we're, we're managed by Alliance Bernstein in terms of our, our partner for our money investments. And I do ask them every year what they recommend a draw would be, that would maintain the ability to have an endowment in perpetuity, rather than, you know, consume it and then have to find other sources, probably most of the town in that case. So right now, we're at about a million fifty between the two endowments. They must remain separate by will and by law. Hodge is about three hundred and seventy-three, this is as of September thirtieth, market's changed a little bit since then. The minor is six seventy-four, six hundred and seventy-four thousand. We do prepare a budget for both libraries, and there is some pass-through funding from the Hodge to Minor to support our principal library. We don't have a staff line, for instance, at the Hodge, although we do have activities. So by law, we're allowed to do that, and you know, we pass through everything that we can that isn't a direct expense at the Hodge. That's probably all that I can offer you, that's not a repeat of the January budget, which is getting kind of late.
Can I just ask, what was Bernstein's response in terms of your spend?
Were a little higher, we're coming up on the time when I would do that. Last year, we were a little higher than they would have liked. And we've seen that over the past year. So we try to maintain a four percent draw, or less, and you know, if the market rebounds, we might be able to do that a little better.
But you can average over three years. Kind of maintain it, though.
Average.
Average the, the draw over a three-year period, that's what at Kenyon College, that's what we do. Yeah, it's pretty standard, I think, yeah.
I didn't ask them how they got their metric, but I will include that in the discussion for this year.
Well, it's just, it helps you in your forecasting.
Yeah, absolutely.
This memo from June twenty-first of two thousand and five, the last couple items, just for the record, it was people that weren't in attendance. On Thursday, two thousand and five, following individual, individuals convened a meeting at Roxbury Town Hall to discuss Minor Memorial Library and many issues involving the town of Roxbury and the library, Barbara Henry, First Selectman, King Barron, Town Treasurer, Cynthia Newby, Library Treasurer, Ed Tierney, Chairman, Board of Finance, Enrico Malo, Rognow, CPA and Partner, Charles and Haven and Company, and Gail McTaggart, Taggart Town Council. Seems to me, so there's seven, there's six items, but as far as the financial part that the town contributes to, number five, it says that the Board of Trustees of the Roxbury Library are fully responsible for all personnel issues relating to employees at the library, and for the payment of all annual monetary compensation relating to said employees. And number six says that the town will continue to pay the library directors' medical insurance, life insurance, and pension, in addition, the town will pay for the ground maintenance, workman's comp, and liability insurance for the library. These expenditures are in addition to the quarterly payment received by the library from the town, which supplements their overall budget, additional expenses will be noted in the library's overall compensation from the town in the detail of the town's annual operating budget and on the town's annual government-wide financial statements. So these last two items, in my opinion, and Annette, maybe you want to weigh in, because you've been on as long as I have, has been pretty much how we've been operating, fair to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to put that in the record, does anybody have any comments? Annette?
No. I mean, I, I guess I wonder whether, this is now, what, eighteen years old? Might it be time to do a new memo that, that accurately states, once we're done with these discussions, where we are today, or does this still stand?
Well, I guess the question would be, are you guys satisfied with the relationship, the way it is right now, me and the library?
Oh, I personally say yes.
I think so, and to, to me, yes, and to Paul's point about the three-year look, look back. Essentially, we know we have a dynamic that, that ends up with taking the smallest amount possible, you know, from the endowment in order to keep it, so we, we have to look at our, at our fundraising ability, which is why we have this next piece, just to review with you. I don't, in my experience versus treasurer, then chair, the, the Board of Finance has never wanted to codify any particular amount or percentage. Instead, we worked together in this dynamic fashion to come up with a fair and reasonable number, and I, to me, that's been terrific, a very satisfactory.
We're all on the same team, I've said this to you before, you know, and it's, it's, um, you know, the library's another, it's a great asset of the town.
Absolutely.
So did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, just, I'd like to be completely transparent and provide probably too much detail in January, but
I have, I would like to add, that I think that this is an asset to the community, has only been burnished more and more, you know, in the time Diddy and I've been living up here full-time. I mean, I'm now taking conversational French, I mean, I mean, I go to every opening, I buy art. I mean, it's just, I think it's just an amazing asset, so I, I applaud everything you've done and are doing. So I'm with Ed, you know.
Would you like to add anything, Kathleen?
It's just one comment, because you're, we're actually, in response to Paul's question about the endowment, there is the note on page four, in Cynthia's prepared document, at the meeting notes, wait, on page four. Where did it go? Hold on. The endowment, though I lost the right page, shoot, must be the page before, was all set. The, well, the point is, the endowment grew from six hundred and something thousand dollars to here it is, it's a fiduciary duty of the Board to manage and best and preserve its endowments. The initial fund of six hundred and twenty-two thousand, three seventy-five as of January two thousand has grown to one million seventeen thousand sixteen dollars on September thirtieth. So I'm relatively new to the board, having started in two thousand sixteen, I think, I don't know when, but six, seven years ago. So I've been a part of the management of the money and the board and the financials, and I think the purpose that, that the idea, you know, Cynthia doesn't like this part, but she's retiring next month. And I think it's wonderful that we're all getting a pretty good detailed tutorial on the history of the library, because it's all in her head, so, and we need to get it out, so I appreciate it very much for all of us. So now I'll tell you about the fun stuff on, on the fundraising. We gave you a piece of paper with the history of the fundraising, it's in your packet, one of Cynthia's attachments, appendices. And just for reference, pretty, pretty much in the early two thousands, we were raising about twenty thousand, a little over twenty a year. And then we kind of got into a multi-year thirty thousand and change, plus estate gifts, that prompted me, this, you prompted me to say, we have to make a more concerted effort to remind people that we could be a legacy gift, and so that will be something I put on the agenda.
I don't think we have the, those numbers.
Well, there's extra copies of everything.
It's, it's not in here.
Oh, here, when, well, and
Here it is. Yeah, it was in, it was in, it was in that, the thing that I sent from Cynthia.
Yeah.
My printer's broken, and our library is cool, so I went to Woodbury, they're very nice. Anyway, you see the track record. You see the track record, we have pretty much in the twenties, and then in the thirties for pretty much a while. And it was good, and we have all these estate gifts, but then, since then, we've kind of upped it, we, we hit the kitchen tour, if you remember that, or if you attended.
Yeah, we were, I think, we were, we were part of it.
That's right.
It was Julie and I work, yeah.
Yeah, and so was Paul and I. So we, we were, it was great, very successful, and it was for our twenty-fifth anniversary of the library. No, that was our twentieth, sorry. And then we went through, you know, and we get to two thousand and nineteen, which was the twenty-fifth anniversary, and we ended up raising fifty-one thousands, which was a big jump, what was the change? The change was really a lot to do with partly the pandemic, and all the news of people, and you see, we've maintained a much higher level of giving since two thousand nineteen.
Substantially, almost double compared to some other years, yeah.
Well, that's my, yes, and there's reasons for that, and I'm not gonna dwell on all the details, but I'll hit the highlights for you. I would like to point out the difference in the kitchen tour to the Studio Stars was sixty-seven percent increase in a special event, and part of that, and kudos, big kudos, go to Teresa and her advertising committee, that would be we completely widened the circle of where we advertised. And Cynthia managed all, I'm sorry, Teresa managed all the online advertising, we've ended up advertising throughout Litchfield County, not just Southern, Southern Litchfield, and we also didn't work at Fairfield, and that brought in a much larger attendance than we've had in the past. We also have posters, as far as I ever shop, which is about thirty minutes in every direction. So, and then we, we kind of, we made a concerted effort to reach out to all the new residents, we've had quite a few since the COVID situation, and we spent, we do special mailings to them, welcoming them to town, inviting them to come get library cards, and, you know, see what we have to offer, and the combination of programs that came out of COVID, because we couldn't be physically together, a lot of that has stayed in combination with the in-person, and so we've got so many more events, and well-attended, and Teresa will tell you more about that. Two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, it's gonna be our thirtieth anniversary event, and so we are gonna do a Studio Stars again, which, if you weren't here or didn't know, was artists that we do show their work, look at, that were live in town, would do a ten-by-ten painting or art, whatever medium, for a hundred bucks.
Pardon? Unsigned.
It was unsigned.
You don't know until later.
No, you don't even know.
Well, I found that way.
Yeah, everybody knows.
It was on the back of, of what I bought, because I bought two, and, yeah.
Oh, and I did overhear some very skilled, well-known, talented artists, one, just one, saying to me, I feel really embarrassed, people put so much work into this, and I, I will do better the next time. And I was very impressed, he's like, he was really embarrassed, because he saw the great work that people had done, so, anyway. So that's, that's kind of come up, and we'll again do a much bigger situation. The annual fund drive is going out right now, I think I left half of it over there, but, oh, here it is. There, so this is going out, if you haven't seen it, this is what's going out this week, you'll be in your mailbox shortly. More, more kudos to Cher, because we have gotten aware of all the turnover in town. We clean up that list every year, and we welcome the new people. Pam put in a tremendous amount of time this year, trying to get to the, the LLCs, without a lot of famous people moved to town. And we don't have their names, because their addresses are LLCs, so she went looking for the, who, who owns these things, and how do we contact them? And, and also added a bunch of names of people who attend our events, and so we have an additional four hundred and sixty-seven asks going out. So, planned, we're planning to do a little more analysis this year, we're tracking them. So we're planning to do a little more analysis this year. We're tracking them separately. So we see what our return is. It's going to be the same as it is on the other. I've just never done the number before. So we'll know that going forward. We are also re-announcing our walk of celebration outside. That's the papers, the bricks, the tiles. We are soliciting a logo from that's the home birds, the committee there. And we've asked our teacher at Shapag, who teaches graphic arts, to design a logo for our walk of celebration. And we're relaunching that in our third this year coming. And we're going to make a big deal out of it. And we're gonna, it's going to be a big deal. So we've got a Shapag kid getting us a logo. The art teacher got a family prop, someone passed away. So it's been a little delayed, but we're going to finish that up. And we're really excited about that. And the pop-up pubs, which don't make us very much money, though, the art sales do. So the pop-up pubs, which are kudos to Teresa. Again, those have been a huge hit in town. And I don't know how many of you even go to those, but they're a lot of fun.
I've been to a couple. They are fun.
Oh, yeah. And did you see? Well, so then we have young people coming. I mean, like, there were young people, you want to ask them for ID. And it's like, they're coming to the library. But the exposure that it gives us to the hodge is really more of a project of goodwill, although we need some money. So if I miss anything, you guys? So anyway, that's it.
Do you have any questions for Kathleen?
I have never understood the relationship between the library and the Friends of the Library.
Oh, that's an interesting one.
When this money. Yes, I understand. When this money represents money to which organization or both.
The library.
Board of trustees.
Not the Friends. The Friends, the Friends.
Have their own mailing.
You know, I wrote the letter twenty five years ago that explained it because I started the fund drive. Because the Friends wanted everybody to spend a dollar and everybody should be a member. And I said, we're not going to get anywhere with a dollar times two thousand people, you know, it's not working. So we decided to take the plunge and do two. So the Friends are a membership organization. They're also a five oh one C three, which we are, we cannot be, of course.
You're part of the town.
We're part of town. We have a tax, and we're tax exempt.
Contributions would be exempt.
Yes, of course. So that's when we, that's when we started that. So the Friends now, the Friends organization, Friends of the Roxbury Library have continued fundraising separately. And then under a budget and conversation that Teresa has with them, they plan an amount, most of it goes for circulation materials, and then she requests additional items as she needs them through the year. So basically, they're at about, I would say, about twenty thousand a year. And this is all, this is there, that's not reflected here.
It's separate.
Yeah, separate.
So I'm just sort of puzzled at how to really make evaluate it.
I get that question twice a year, every year. The library board's letter goes out and the Friends two letters go out. So generally, how I explain it is the Friends, they're a five oh one C three, where the library board is a municipal organization. And the Friends fundraised in support of their mission, which is to support the library. And in general, the money that they raise and they give to the library goes towards, like, I like to say, the fun stuff. So the Friends of the Library say, well, we'll give you eighteen thousand dollars this year. And that's usually what, when we're doing the budget, that's usually what I put in for circulating materials, for, yeah, ebooks, all that kind of stuff. And then also a chunk of it for programs for kids and adults. And the money that comes from the town, from the library board, from the endowment, that generally is the bricks and mortar, the staff, things that keep the library open.
And the contributions to the library.
Yeah. So all that would goes, you know,
So.
bricks and mortar and staff mostly, you know.
So you prepare a budget for the library. And that budget expenses include, expenses are going to be funded in part by the Friends.
By the Friends, yeah, yeah.
So if somebody says, what difference does it make which one I give, contribute to, let's see.
Usually I say, everything helps. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Absolutely both, because they're doing two different functions. And that's something that we all do. Both organizations keep trying to explain because, you know, with that annual fund drive has the thank yous in it. And people will call us and say, why didn't I get any money? And we're like, did you? Recognition. And it's because, well, I get you gave to Friends. You know, so I mean, it does confuse people, but it's not atypical for most, a lot of towns. And Cynthia's letter, again, she wrote down, quoted for you the percentage of, and it's in there too, the percentage of what the memo comes from, if I can find.
Fifty nine percent salaries.
Okay.
Yeah, I usually say, the money that the Friends raised, if we didn't have the support of the annual fund drive and the budget that comes here to the town and the appropriation from the town, we wouldn't be able to do anything with what the Friends give us, you know, because that's what keeps the doors open.
Ultimately have a single budget.
Yeah, yes.
So it's all.
Yeah.
But on page three, they, Cynthia itemized it for you. So the town covers about fifty six percent of our income. Sixteen percent comes from the endowments and savings. Seventeen percent comes from that piece of paper. And the balance is covered by grants and art shows, but eight percent are gifts from the, from the Friends. So their eight percent, town's fifty six, the endowment is sixteen, and that thing is seventeen percent. With little bits of money coming from art shows and pop-ups and grants, lots of grants. Teresa's good at grants.
Comes in from all these different sources and it goes out.
Exactly. And it almost comes out to exactly the same number.
And we go through a budgeting process with the Friends every year. Teresa determines what her needs are. And they commit to those funds. So it's, it's not a hopeful bucket. It's a.
And as far as you're concerned, it works fine.
Works really well. And the Friends, the Friends are great, you know, they've always been here in the whole library in the last couple of years. So I'm grateful for that.
Is that stuff you would not have budgeted otherwise?
Correct. Yeah. Oh, I mean, I would have, but over time.
That's my point is just all the money comes in.
You'd be escrowing for that as well, in addition to.
Yeah, or like, you know.
So this, this money doesn't represent the total philanthropic support of the library.
No, one bucket.
Then include the friends.
No, for example, that report is, does not include grants.
Grants.
I just want you to see the actual fundraising response to our people outreach.
Good.
Well, it's terrific.
For our capital requests, we're counting on grant funding, for instance, for the windows, for the hodge. And that's something that Teresa, so we, we try to enhance the funds.
Great. Doing a great job. I love the Arthur Miller program on Sunday.
Oh, yeah. That was our first one.
It was back.
Now, now we need a Calder back in the yard, right?
They took it away?
How did it disappear?
They took it for refurbishment.
Oh, so it'll come back?
We will. We're hoping. The last time they took, they took Mountain away, and then they replaced it with what we had most recently had. And so I was hoping that they would put something else there, but so far they haven't. And we tried to ask, but.
Well, they were putting a lot out on the property.
I want a giant.
And they've been moving things around.
And that mobile that they just put out is.
You remember they have a new facility in Philadelphia.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Are they going to open or open?
They're going, it's opening.
Are they really going to open?
It's going to open. I imagine he needs, you know, merch for there.
Would either of you two in the audience like to say anything or?
Okay, I did have, I guess I'll do my quick little bit about the capital stuff. So as Pam was saying, we tried to, mostly Pam tries to escrow for a lot of these big projects. Since the building's about thirty years old now, there's all these things that are breaking. So we generally haven't had any capital projects come due until very recently, last year, this year, and probably the next couple of years with the ACs, the heating, the roof, that kind of thing. But now that all these things are needing to be fixed and repaired, it's a learning experience for me because as a town building and talking with Kim and with Patrick, learning a little bit more about the town's process with some of these larger items. So we're working, I'm working with the board. Hopefully, next month, we'll have a new policy in place that reflects how the library deals with capital projects and basically just spelling out that a capital project, we follow town procedures and that I, the executive director of the library would work with the first selectman and the treasurer to get all this stuff done and get it out to bid the way it's supposed to be done. But because some of these things are kind of coming up, it's a, it's a good time to do that.
It is.
But if anybody has any questions.
I think those things should be codified in some sort of memo of understanding. In terms of policies, procedures, I think it's just good to get that written down. So people understand, you know, you can only pay on an invoice, not on a.
The town has it.
Well, that, I thought that had been done a couple of years ago.
Yeah, we do have that policy. It's in one of the.
Oh, it is.
The purchase policy.
Oh, it has to be sent into it. Okay.
It's mostly that.
Just like the gag order.
They're not my, I know the library policy is really well. I don't know the town's policies really well. So it's just making sure that the library has on record that these are the things that we follow.
So what we'll do is we'll draft the policy, we'll show it to Kim.
Kim says you have it already.
They have the.
Yeah, the town.
The town's policy.
Policy that would comply with the town.
There you go.
We will adopt it at our next meeting and then we'll, all of our policies, you know, are on online.
Great.
We'll edit every piece there's ever a question.
Paul, they would all go in that policy book that Rico's doing.
Oh, right. Yeah. So my, my question is, with respect to, I mean, in terms of forecasting, do you have, like, I know you're escrowing, so the next thing might be the roof, the AC, HVAC is now, and then the roof.
Yeah, and the windows.
And the windows at the hodge. So you've got this all outlined and in your heads, right?
And on paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they've escrowed twenty five thousand a year for twenty, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, twenty six, and twenty six, twenty seven. So but that could possibly change as prices go up because the escrow in twenty twenty two and then twenty twenty three went up by three thousand because prices. And now to draw it down from that. I put all this together in a spreadsheet, so I was going to go.
You are good. Now, do you guys have a building manager, somebody that kind of oversees all that?
We don't. And that's that's something that's all, like, my daily life is difficult because of that.
It comes, it comes with your job.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, you don't learn that in library school. So.
We have a little committee that's been, was helping you, and then they retire, but we've got new people.
Yes, yeah.
So she's does.
So I mean, I call Patrick a lot and I say, I ask him a lot of questions about stuff.
He's the good one to ask.
Yeah. But it does, it does take a little bit of, you know, the, sometimes the like, the kind of relationship between the library and the town and not kind of knowing what I should be, this is like probably my problem, like, I don't need to hear all this stuff. What I should be going to the town for and what I should just be handling internally is always a struggle for me, but.
And that's why we're here.
That's why we're here to have an open dialogue. And Patrick has been.
Patrick has an open door policy.
Yes. And he's been, he's been great about answering a lot of my questions, helping me out.
Assuming we're going to get the policies all straightened out, I have a specific question about the air conditioners. Do you have, do you, we have enough money now in escrow to cover this project?
Yes, yes.
Okay, right. So that's not an issue, right? It's just, it's just a matter of getting crossing our Ts and dotting our Is in terms of doing the, following the right policies, but the money's there.
Precisely.
Okay.
So my last question is, the point that people make certain provisions in their own estate planning for the library. To me, that's a program that needs to be embraced.
Are you volunteering?
I'm not volunteering, but I'm saying I think it's a great idea. Let's just do it. But I really think it's a great way. And, you know, people don't think about it unless they're asked.
That's right.
Think about it.
They listen to NPR, they tell you all the time.
Exactly.
If you're going to die, leave us money.
Leave us money. And I did that for Kenya. Although the returns are not any good. That's a moment.
Yeah, I think we have to be sensitive, though, that to Teresa's point, which is, you know, she's the building manager and there's only, we have a really small staff. You know, and now to take on also, you know, a legacy campaign. I mean, I just think it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. And I'm sure the board is stepping up.
And that it can be outsourced.
No, no, Kathleen, I literally only got that idea when reading Cynthia's note and looking at the recap that, oh, look at all the legacies they've stopped. And that affects myself. I need to make that visible in some way. It's not going to be an in-your-face, not going to go send cards or go begging to every older person in town and say, have you put the library in here, Will? I just want to remind people that it's an option.
But a lot of organizations are actually making it quite public. And, you know, you say, you know, I've put you in my will and they have little legacy groups and but I'm just trying to be sensitive to the fact that the staff has a lot of their.
I appreciate that because there are a number of things Teresa has learned how to do restoration architecture, testing for red. Quite a skill set. But this particular one would be a board function. So, and, you know, as you say, everybody's doing it, so we should do our own letter and just get that word out. And I think that's a good idea.
I don't know. I didn't know. Do you cover the giving from the IRAs in your fundraiser?
We have, we've done once or twice, included that in the letter. It's a good point.
We do corporate matching, so this would be an adjunct to that.
Anybody else have any questions? Nanette?
No. I appreciate, I appreciate.
Thank you very much.
Teresa, especially, I mean, the programming at the library has increased so dramatically in your tenure and also just the formatting of your newsletter. It's easy to read. It is attractive. It doesn't take you three years to read it. And it's, I mean, it's really succinct.
No, it's a really rich resource.
It is. It is. And it's great that you have so many programs to appeal to the cross-section of residents of all ages, et cetera.
And you got some pretty tough competition next door, too.
Well, that's one of the nice things is that we've been, I've been working really closely with both Burnham and of the Gun on programs and all kinds of things. So I mean, you know, Jean, who's the director at Burnham, she works at our library once a week. And I talk with Audra, who's the director at the Gun, all the time. So we try to work together and kind of resource share. And, you know, we're all, we're all in it together.
That's great. Brilliant. Bravo.
One of the things that I, I think is happening, Patrick, you include all the events at the library in the weekly email. One of the things that I, I think is happening, Patrick, you include all the events at the library in the weekly email, which is great. But what Diddy and I have said is, damn it, we better read that thing and get them on our calendar because we missed that whole thing on ghosts.
Oh.
And we really wanted to.
She's going to come back in the winter.
I mean, but these things are, they're a draw. And then even when we were all shut down in the pandemic, I mean, you had some marvelous things online. You know, that woman from Rome.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, gosh.
That, that's Isabel.
Isabel is great.
She, well, Teresa hired her as our programming person. And, uh, Isabel's lived all over the world and, well, we have a lot of places, one of them being Florence. And she met that woman and she brought it up as an idea of reconnecting with her.
Now people go on vacation to Florence and they call her up to get them tours, which is really fun.
Yeah, I remember pre-pandemic, you had that talk on the chestnut trees.
Oh, yeah.
Very interesting. And then recently, the history of the Chapag Railroad down at the old.
Yeah.
Train station. I found them both really well, time well spent and, and informative, so thank you.
I'm glad you asked. You need to ask Teresa what her favorite holiday is. It's coming up.
Halloween.
Halloween. And there's a big storybook walk.
Friday.
On Friday on the trail for adults and for kids. So in addition to library work and building management, I also leaf blow on Joey's Trail.
All right. Leaf blow is fun.
Doing that tomorrow morning.
Teresa, I'd like to see your job description.
Standard operating procedures for you. It's always other duties as assigned to your, like, that I assign myself.
What outfit do you wear each day?
Disney was your first job, right? Yeah, there you go.
Have a magical.
You can do all kinds of things.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Really great.
So it's getting a little late. Um, last thing on the agenda is other business. Is there anything anybody would like to discuss? I got a couple of quick things. Um, so I got a call from the chairman of the Bridgewater Board of Finance about the, the big pendulum swings on our each town's share of the budget, of the school budget.
School budget, yeah.
About meeting with the chairman from Washington, about discussing a formula like a five-year floating average, something along those lines. So it hasn't happened yet, but I'll keep everybody in the loop.
It's a, I think it's a meeting.
Because they were in the red as opposed to.
We don't have any authority.
No, I know we don't.
I guess we just offer it as a guy, as a guide.
No, no, I think.
Yeah, and then, um, there, there has been, has been an FOI complaint, um, two complaints. And it's the board, um, there's a November third hearing that I'll be attending. Uh, I think Paul's going to come up too.
Definitely. Is that New Haven?
I think it's in Hartford.
Or Hartford, okay.
We're going to go together.
Um, I'm, I'm pretty confident, very confident that both, both these missed. One, one has something to do with the way we noticed the budget hearing, which is.
Yes. Um, do you want support there? I mean.
Well, I'm going.
If, if anybody wants to come, it's November third. I don't know what time.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so there's been two FOI complaints lodged against the Board of Finance and it's going to be a public hearing on November third.
FOI.
Freedom of information.
Oh.
And it's my understanding, one, one had to do with the way that the budget hearing in April was not properly noticed, which it was. And the other thing had to do with the, um, the motion to move that five-point-three million to town meeting after the budget hearing, because it was a special hearing that, uh, the agenda sets along the lines of discussion of budget, which we did, and we made a motion on it.
Yep.
For some reason, there was a complaint that it's, it was an illegal vote, is, is my understanding. I'm not, I'm not really a hundred percent sure, but it's loosely those two issues.
Okay.
And I'm confident that they'll.
They'll go away.
And, um, but, but we got, we got, you know, I have to address it and, um, if anybody else wants to come up.
Gail, Gail and Patrick will go with you, right?
Yeah, and Kim.
And me.
And Paul. Um, so once I know that the time and the place, I'll let everybody else know. You don't, don't feel like, but it's.
I think I have to be in, in Waterbury Court.
All right, um, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Good to see you, Nanette. Patrick?
Good to see you all.
Take care.
Patrick, get home soon.
All right, I will.